Get going with our introductions and our student presentation while we wait for one last trustee to come to create a quorum. My apologies for being late. I think we all experienced the traffic on Main Street in the rain with the construction. Let's, uh, let's start with our typical introductions around, around the world. Good morning. Hi.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Arda Fana. I'm the comptroller.
Our comptroller, chief of campus safety and work management.
Alden Yu, business manager and risk assessment.
Kathy Colasto, associate vice provost at RADA.
Adrian Miranda, interim A P of economics.
Skylar Banks, a business professor at North.
Elmyra, S G of North Business Club.
My name is Malik Khamal. I'm the treasurer of the business club.
Jenna Grantham of Football News.
Kirk Neils, I'll be giving more management.
Crystal Robinson, thanks. I'm S G of Career and Security Office.
Connie Greedy, V P Student Affairs and Workforce Mountain.
Katie Cook, A U C C President.
Maury Ryan, interim director of.
Craig Derris Johnson, executive director of marketing communications.
All right.
Fiona, assistant department of trustees.
Rodney, of data technology.
Ryan Noble, I C.
Ken Curley, trustee.
Candice Morrison, trustee.
Carrie Phillips, trustee.
Jeff Stumm, trustee.
Adim Sagai, officer in charge.
Adam Cameron, one student trustee.
Okay, we're five trustees. We need six for a quorum. Len will, uh, text me, Len Lanahan. He will be here momentarily. So, Dr. Sagai, would you like to, uh, start with our student presentation, please?
Sure, sure. Absolutely. Good mo- good morning, everyone. Um, as we have been doing, uh, the way we have been starting our board meeting is with our students and today we have our students coming. Do you want to introduce our students?
Thank you, Dr. Sagai. Uh, welcome everyone. I am very happy to introduce today, uh, associate professor Skylar Banks and two of our students, uh, Elmyra and Malik. And they are going to talk to you about the new business club that we, Skylar has started and is heading up. Scott, Professor Banks, let's just go.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for having us. So, um, folks, you guys, some of you know I'm a graduate of SUNY Erie, so this place is close to my heart. We had not had a business club at North, um, since two thousand, early two thousands. I started teaching there part-time in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and became full-time in twenty fifteen. It was always on my heart to restart that business club. Um, what does the business club look like for, in my vision? So, the business club is a, some of you heard this other term, Center for Business Excellence, right? Some of you heard that term. So, we did a car before the wheel. We're still working on Center for Business Excellence, right? But we started the business club, which was going to be a subset of that. That's a space for students, not business students, all students. A space where they can come and learn, um, practical life skills, business skills, um, get internships. Um, we, a place where we have our alumni come in too. Folks that have been here before, they come in and work with our students. We have speakers already who've had, we want folks, we've only had three meetings. We have our, our governing board has been, uh, established. Six students are the governing board. I've been taking a little bit more lead because we are brand new, getting structures together. Folks, we're teaching them how to run meetings. We're teaching them decorum, order. Um, we've had, um, speakers come in so far from career services in meeting one. And in meeting two, we had, um, the foundation come in and teach us on techniques to raising funds. So folks, it's all encompassing. This place will grow to a place where, um, we're going to have more businesses coming in. We're going to be doing projects for businesses. We're going to be a network, more networking opportunities. We need, I need the board to help me with more networking opportunities for my students outside in the public. Um, that's where I need some help at. And if there's funds over, so we start from zero and we work from zero and we do what we can. Um, but we need funding to make these programs grow. And folks, the, the goal, my, one of my goals, and it's going to be the student, students' goal too, they're going to, they're going to help implement what that goal looks like, what that mission statement looks like. Retention, recruitment, and growth. That's, that's what the goal of the, uh, the, um, business club is for. Next week, Friday, we're taking twenty-nine students to a Sabres game. I think twenty twenty-one, I've never been to a pro event. Folks, we're going to introduce them to what a, um, an event like that is, but it's, it's a learning aspect. We're going to be looking at the marketing, advertising, and sales. We're going to look at how the, soon as we get in the arena, right? We're looking at everything that's going to be, you know how it is, all the action, all the different things that are going on. It's educational, folks. Everything I do is educational. We're teaching, we're learning, we're growing. I'm learning and I'm growing from them. So, that's what the business club is. And, um, we're going to continue it. We're going to grow it. This audio, I'm, uh, I'm doing some stuff in my room until the Center of Business Excellence is there. And some people like it and some people don't, but it's going to be.
It's very bright. It's very bright red.
Absolutely. That's what marketing is. Um, but, like, in my classroom, folks, hidden away, I have a refrigerator in there. You know why? My students are hungry. We have food in there for them. I went to the machine out here. I pushed the button. Almost three dollars for a bottle of water, a candy bar, one eighty-five. We get all donations, folks, and we feed our students every day. Center, Center for Business Excellence and the business club, because they don't have a lot. Um, so we're doing everything collectively we can to make this place a better place for them and grow. And we will grow this school. But I wouldn't use about students. It's about them.
Hi, my name is Elmyra. I'm from Yersol. I'm from Ukraine. And now I am S G of Business North Club. And I want to talk about Business Club can be very useful for several ways for students. The Business Club can provide a platform for students networking. This networking can valuable connection for networking in the future for students who will be graduate. And we want to organize more seminars with lectures by industry professional. This event will be allowed to students to understand again practical knowledge from the experienced individual, because this is so important. You know, meet two people who have experience, who knows many opportunities, how to help to new students. And the North Business Club may offer internship and placement opportunities for work in the future. And I hope we will do, and we start this way with Professor Banks, and I'm so proud, because we never have a, this type of club before. And thank you so much, Professor Banks. And to be part of Business Club, it's a great opportunity to make successful as future and make future more likely. Thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. My name is Malik Amal. Uh, I'm an international student from Pakistan. This is my first ever semester at UCC. I'm actually a transfer student from Denison University, and I'm really proud to be a part of this business club, and thanks to our amazing professor, Mr. Banks, for making this. For making this business club a finally a reality, and I believe, so personally, I, I believe that a degree will only get you so far. However, connections will get you even farther, and through the business club, I believe, uh, a- as companies come to us and we go to different companies, students will be networking. And through networking, inshallah, I believe, many students will be provided opportunity that they don't even think they would qualify for, and this way, so many of our students could be getting out of their comfort zone. And what is a good person? A good man is a person who gets out of his comfort zone and goes and goes explore and explores, uh, uh, beyond, beyond his boundaries, you know? And so, uh, I mean, as Mr. Banks said, that, uh, a lot of our students have not been to a professional event yet. Me neither, like, this will, this will be my first ever hockey game that I'll be going to, and I'm pretty excited for it. And, uh, I mean, thanks to Mr. Banks, like, this is finally becoming a reality, and I believe we have a really good board, uh, like, a really good, uh, student body government. And under this government, I believe that we will excel, and inshallah, inshallah, we will reach, we will, we will be the best club on campus, for sure. That's right.
No, I'll just close. Um, yeah, this is what it's about. It's for them, right? And, um, building, um, I just got to share, they, they're both wonderful students, but I want you, the board needs to know this, right? Because I serve on boards, and a lot of times we just see the surface stuff. Malik is here for one semester. He's going back to Denison. He's going back to Denison. But he'll show up in our numbers that we didn't retain him, folks. He shows up in our numbers. We get a lot of students like that. We have to do a better job upfront, identifying why they aren't here. And then pulling them out of that number, because we look at these numbers in broad, right? Um, that's important. We get a lot of students like that. That's the last thing I have to share. Any help that you guys and ladies can give us to help us grow, opportunities we will go. We're going to be doing volunteer stuff. This time this season, we're going to be doing volunteer stuff. I'm on the board of the city mission. We're going to be there. They're opening up the Code Blue Center down, um, on, uh, Genesee. We're going to do some volunteer work there. Any opportunities that we have, and I'll also be doing that with Men of Merit too. So, when I'm doing stuff, folks, I'm doing it for the Business Club and Men of Merit until we get another leader in Men of Merit. Any questions?
When is your hockey game?
Next, uh, Friday, we're going to the, uh, yeah, we're going to, um, Flyers game.
So, two days from now or nine days?
Uh, nine days. Nine days. They're going to put us up on the jump.
So, was that November third?
Third.
Yeah, okay.
Third, yeah. It's twenty-nine of us, I suppose.
Well, a couple of comments in response to what you said. Col, uh, Dr. Scott, Paul Daniu, thank you for prioritizing, uh, at the beginning of our board meeting, students, faculty members. This is what it's all about, and that serves as a reminder. We can read the vision statement and the mission statement at the beginning of a meeting, but it's better to have folks who are actually here on the ground, teaching our students, joining our community. And, and I predict bright business futures for both of you. This is great that you're here. Um, I note that you're, you're both international students, and, um, certainly Elmyra, uh, having come from Ukraine, uh, I speak for everyone in the room. We wish your loved ones, friends, others there, your whole country, uh, peace eventually, freedom, and interim safety. Uh, we're, we're sad that your country is experiencing this invasion from Russia.
Yeah, I'm here almost one year. I'm here by myself. My family is still in the, they're still in the patient territory, and it's so hard when you came to here by yourself. Because you need to start everything from zero, start to learn in English, start to find to people with who you can be a friend, start, start to find way to learning, you know? It's so hard. It's not easy, but I'm happy because I met with many good peoples. It's a good, it's a good time thing, but it's so hard.
Your point is well made. No matter where you come from, Malik, Pakistan, um, you're coming here and you had to start from zero, and all those different language and the whole situation is a lot. Without having to worry about your loved ones being in danger, your country being invaded, friends, family, uh, under, under this difficult situation. So, I think we all want to be respectful of Elmyra and anyone else here from Ukraine, and go the extra mile to provide what support we can in a small way to help. Uh, and I think it's very brave and honorable that you, uh, are carrying on the way you are, and that you came today to speak to a big crowd of, you know, older adults and, uh, despite what must be on your mind. So, props to you.
It's true, so, and I just want to add, uh, when the war started, I'm a, for some of you that don't know, I am a US Army, uh, veteran, a military police force. So, when these things break out around the world, we talk about them in our classroom, how it affects life and how it affects business. And I, again, I have to take off my hat sometime as a professor, and that military comes out of me. Um, I said to my international students, if they call the old guy to go over, um, to support, um, Ukraine, I will be there. And they have to know that. They know that, my students know that. They're my family. We have a subset. We're wrapping our, we wrap our arms around our students. We give everything we have.
Well, this kind of engagement, you mentioned the food. Our students need a lot of different things, and to the extent those of you on the faculty can obviously maintain that frontline role, uh, understanding in the immediate presence of our students, what they need, how best to support and help them. That helps them with their life goals, and of course, our goals as an institution are to, you know, maintain a robust student body and have our students be happy and successful, so. And Malik, I don't want to, you know, ignore you as well. That, that, uh, your country is known conflict. Uh, maybe not in your lifetime directly, but over, many of us are old enough to remember conflicts about Pakistan and India. And, um, you know, we can't hope that, that your family and your friends and loved ones maintain peaceful and safe existence in your home country.
Thank you. I brought, so finally, because we have Israel and Palestine now, and we have students that are on both sides. Believe me, we have to take time to talk about it in the classroom, because they're, they're angry, right? And we saw what happened in Maine last night. Yes, yeah.
I'm glad you brought up both events. Um, you know, certainly the Israeli Hamas thing is something that we have to, you know, we, we, we consider the failure to elect a Speaker of the House of Representatives a problem? That's not a problem. What is going on in Israel and, uh, the Palestinian occupied territories? So, uh, and then, of course, the mass shooting. Mark is here. I know he stays up nights tossing and turning, thinking about how our campus needs to be kept safe. You know, no place is completely safe. Lewiston, Maine, you wouldn't have put that on your short list of places likely to have a mass shooting, but we did last night. And until we address that, we're going to remain under that risk, so all we can do is try to mitigate it. So, thank you to our security folks who think about that a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Colin. Thank you. Uh, let's, let's keep that front and center of every board meeting. It's a good way to start the board meetings to center us on what we're trying to do here. Let's convene the official portion of the meeting with a quorum, having been present for a while now, nine twenty-seven. Uh, let's have the roll call, please.
Melody Baker, she's not on, is she?
No, she's at a conference and excused.
Ken Crewley?
Here.
Len Lenahan?
Here.
Amanda Lau?
At a hearing and excused.
Candace Morrison?
Here.
Carrie Phillips here. Jeffrey Stone?
Here.
And Cameron Lloyd?
Here.
So, having called the meeting to order with a quorum present, we'll, uh, take a look at the minutes from our board meeting most recently, September twenty-eighth, not that long ago. Uh, I, they have been distributed, the minutes in our materials. I reviewed them, had no comments. Anyone else have comments? If not, I'll take a motion to please accept those minutes as presented. Thank you. Cameron, second?
Second.
Thank, uh, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Those minutes are, are accepted. Thank you. Uh, we now move for, to informational items. I don't believe we have any actual action items coming out of budget or other committees, but let's start with our informational items and Ken's report on our last, uh, budget meeting, uh, which was on October twelfth.
Uh, nothing out of the ordinary. Uh, the facilities rentals and waivers, supplier reports, uh, as normally we see them, nothing pops out as being unusual. Budget, actual dashboard, uh, everything going okay. Uh, Arda, do you have anything to, to, to mention at this point? Uh, we have a, one month into our fiscal year now.
Good morning. Uh, Dr. Sagai and myself actually met with Erie County Fiscal Stability Authority this past month, and, um, and just kind of covered not only what the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year looks like, but also what twenty-three and twenty-four is in, is in plan. Sorry.
Okay.
I hear a noise, right? Do you guys hear?
Yeah, I do too. I don't know what that is.
Thanks, Sagai. Okay.
It's like voices.
Uh, Dr. Sagai, by the way, did an amazing job, honestly, just presenting the college and covered and highlighted some very important things that we are doing as a unit. She did cover the strategic plan and how we have developed some goals and, and some, some metrics that we are planning as a unit to overcome financially. I mean, twenty-three, twenty-four, we have come a long way from our initial budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. We were looking at a fund balance of five million dollars. That has shifted, has done a three sixty turnaround, and honestly, the savings are strictly due to salaries and fringe benefits, um, that we have seen during the year, uh, due to the layoffs and the retirements. We do have a, 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 a healthy fund balance right now, but that doesn't mean, um, we don't have to be fiscally responsible. We are starting the year for twenty-three, twenty-four, um, very well positioned. We are keeping our tuition and revenues in check. You know, our enrollment is, uh, is actually better than budget for twenty-three, twenty-four at this point by three percent. But when you compare that, the, the enrollment numbers to prior year, we are actually trending, um, roughly five percent less than prior year, right? We have to be realistic that the enrollment decline is real, and we have to take, um, steps to make sure that our resources actually align with our expenses. Um, uh, we are keeping a close eye on our vacancy control fund. Right now, it's at about seventy percent, less than a million dollars in it, in there. Um, we have posted positions to try to backfill some of very crucial positions within the college. Um, and we're just doing the best that we can. I couldn't be any prouder, honestly.
Did that, was it, little questions, if any, you get from the authority when you were there?
We did have questions about our unrestricted fund balance. They wanted to know how we are doing fiscally for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, they did want to know how city is doing. They were, uh, very concerned about the winter storms that we had. They want to make sure that we are, actually do have engineers and then also some security, uh, in place for, God forbid, we have another storm, and we need alarms and setup. And Paul Daniu has been very responsive in that, and we do have engineers in place. We are working with our insurance company to install, uh, security measures, so this never happens again. The building is valued. We appreciate what the county does for us. Um, they also did bring up the fact that, um, our local contributions may appear lower than, uh, what they should be, because this also affects the chargeback rate that we can charge other counties for students that attend other schools. And they are willing to co- collaborate with us and work with us to see, uh, what they can do to help as far as the maintenance of effort. Uh, however, please keep in mind that the county does a lot on behalf of the college. Although they don't send the money directly to us, that we have engineers, we have lawyers that work for the college. They, they are very much involved.
We've meant, we discussed in the budget committee, possibility of trying, trying to quantify the county's contributions. Whether we count it as actual aid or not is another question, but there must be a way to come up with some kind of number of food.
Yes, and I did reach out to them, and, um, they are in the process of, um, estimating. I'm not really sure if they can pin down every single penny. Uh, one other thing that I am looking at is the capital projects that we have in place for twenty-three, twenty-four. We actually submitted a twenty-two million dollar request. Of that, sixty percent was actually approved. That's roughly about thirteen million dollars. Natalie Ten, who works for Erie County, uh, does manage, um, a, a lot of our capital projects, actually majority of them, if not all. And we were, and Paul's team actually works very closely with her to, um, keep this college up and running.
Thank you.
Very good. That's helpful, yes. I think, just a little context here, a reminder for trustees and for others. Uh, the, the statute in New York with respect to community colleges, colleges financing calls for essentially a third of the support and cost to come from the students. A third from the local partner, the sponsoring entity in our case Erie County, and a third from, uh, the state. So, it's, it, when you look at the numbers, you, just on their face, strictly talking about dollars, uh, there is an argument to be made that the county is behind its third, and always has been. But it is important to realize that there's non-monetary contributions that actually are almost equivalent of money, but not in the form of a check cut to us in terms of maintenance of effort. Of course, it's great to have maintenance of effort, because that's a floor below which the county will never go again, once they agree to a certain level of maintenance of effort. That's the concept of it. We will maintain this effort going forward. You can count on it. So, it's something to be looked at. Ideally, we'd like to know that on, in, just on a general sense, that what we get from the state, from our students, and from our partner here locally, is roughly equivalent, and that's the point that Ken and Arda were talking about. And it doesn't have to be outright dollar contributions necessarily, but we, we're seeking a, an equivalency there, because otherwise, the burden falls too much on our students, right? And community colleges are designed to help those who, you know, maybe are, are in our community are the most, least likely to be able to bear that financial burden. So, yeah, that's the context in which these questions come out.
Yes, and the team is working, honestly, internally. We are analyzing just about every area of this college, from enrollment to retention, and I'm sure Dr. Sagai can elaborate on that. But, uh, from transportation to student payment plans to, the goal is not to increase tuition and fees. We don't want to put that burden on our students. But then, when you look at the scope of things, and you look at their financial aid, and how the federal government also assists the student in addition to what the trends are in our area, uh, we, we take into a big, big picture. SUNY impacts us, the local county impacts us. I know the grants team, uh, has done an amazing job, uh, trying to aggressively, uh, go after grants to help us with, uh, all aspects of this institution.
Yes, and that was the subject of last meeting, which was some great news, and I know, uh, I think Janet has been researching and writing about our grants, and that's exciting. I mean, that was really great news, the way we ended the last board meeting. Dr. Sagai, uh, Arda mentioned the vacancy control fund and what we're doing with that in terms of. of trying to hire back some crucial positions. What, in your opinion, are the positions that you are most prioritizing in terms of hiring back?
So, thank you. I think a lot of it, sort of, Arda kind of put it in perspective, but I think really looking at students facing areas and positions, but also operationally to make sure that the college is stable. So, one of the areas that we are really aggressively looking and certainly working with the union is our IT, to really make sure that we have the necessary support in the IT area, that that is constantly changing, and certainly our HR department is another area that we're aggressively looking, including, you know, academic side of the college as well. So, but part of it is being mindful of what we need to do to ensure that it matches not only with our enrollment number, but also the services and support that we need to make sure that it aligns. So, we're being very thoughtful about that to make sure that the college is physically responsible and making those decisions that will move the college forward, but be mindful of that aspect of how we do that.
The last board meeting, I know that we all expressed desire to focus, you know, particularly on those student support services, those things that, if you look at the minutes from the last meeting, those things that help students navigate the web of a three-campus complex institution, because anything that constitutes a barrier, we want to work on.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, that is an important thing. Ken, other items, or are you set?
I think we're finished with the budget stuff. I'd like to have Paul come up and just bring us up to date on city campus and anything else with the capital stuff.
Thanks, Arda.
Hello, everybody. City Campus is 99.9% done. I was there, we were meeting with our insurance carrier, or actually, yeah, the actual carrier handover the other day. As Arda had mentioned, we're installing various water pressure monitors, things that would help indicate if any type of water line break were to occur in the future. We're starting with our two most expensive buildings, the post office and the Flick Center. Then we'll probably come out here to B-building, starting with the Nano Wing and the, I forget which other wing, there's another one that has some high-end equipment in it. But, so, the room 460 is pretty much done. They're demobilizing most of their equipment. Actually, when I was there the other day, we were in the elevator with them, they were bringing out some of their dehumidifying equipment, things. They were just, they still do have a little bit of equipment in there because the stain and the poly was drying a little slow, so they were trying to make sure we got the room back sooner than later. We work at North Campus, in the Spring Center is pretty much done, they're just doing punch list items. They cleaned up the grass, they planted new seed. We're kind of winding down at least for the current cycle. We've got things going. We've been meeting to upgrade K. We've been looking at, working with Adrian, Andy Sacco, Kathy over the last several months at upgrading the classrooms and the corridors in K Building. The architect, Ashley McGraw, we've been meeting with them pretty much every other week, in some cases weekly, depending on what we're looking at at the time. So, we've got a lot, a lot of things coming down the pipe. Mechanicals, we're going to start in B-building with electric and heating HVAC upgrades. There's actually a meeting going on right now with the county and with Wendell for the athletic fields, so there's a lot of stuff coming pretty quickly besides what we're wrapping up, but it's nice that City Campus, I think it looks better than it did before, plus, you know, they really did a nice job.
I will vouch for that. I visited for the first time since the incident, a couple weeks ago, for a lunch at the Statler Restaurant there, and it was, the culinary people are doing a great job, as they always do, and the upper-level lobby and atrium area looked fantastic, so the whole place seemed to be back in the form in which we're used to it, so I was glad to see that. Congratulations, and Paul, thank you. I know for the last seven, eight months, nine, 10 months probably, it's been a lot on your plate to focus on what's happening over at City Campus, what did happen, the recovery with Servpro, dealing with the financial part of that, overseeing it, reporting back to the board, we appreciate that.
It starts with the staff, too. I got good people in the department, so, like Rich and Paul Polini, Jimmy Frankhauser, so there's some good leadership at the ground level, too.
Well, that's a SUNY Erie success story, you know, the accident that we had and then the immediate movement across the street, no break for our students in terms of, no disruption for them, and then getting back to the fall where we belong. It's a very, very successful thing, and I'm glad to compliment Dr. Sagai and yourself and the whole team who really worked hard to make that happen. Mark, as well, I know was in the mix, looking at everything, which he always does. Thank you. All set, Ken?
Yes.
All right. Candace, anything from student success side?
No, we did not meet in October. Our next meeting is next week, October 1st, October, goodness, November 1st. Weather is throwing me off. November 1st at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you. And Len, on the marketing side?
Yeah, we didn't meet as well. Craig did file a report, just bringing us up the data, different projects. Is there anything, Craig, you want to report?
While Craig is walking up for the benefit of the room, we're going to make our way through the business, which is a little on the light side today, and at 10 o'clock or whenever we finish, we will have an executive session today, and then the meeting will be adjourned. We will not come back and do any additional business.
Thank you, just two quick updates. We have been working with the Martin Group on the discovery process for the website overhaul. Went through that and had a presentation for Martin, went through the findings from that. I think the thing that I wanted to share is that it was more good news than we kind of expected. We found that, for the most part, users find the site informative and appealing and easy to search, they can find a lot of the information that they want. That doesn't mean we can't improve it, and we're going to, so we're going to keep working on that to produce just a more positive experience. But the big takeaway from that that I wanted to share is that the overhaul of that site is not going to be a giant dramatic change, then a lot of the changes that we're going to see are going to be more iterative. So, there will be changes over time, but it won't be a big, new, brand-new site, you won't see that kind of thing. But we will improve the user experience, and our goal is to have a much more, much more improved and student-centered approach to the site. The last thing I wanted to share was also on the internal communication side, we started a newsletter on my ECC page, and I think that that's something we're going to keep building and improving on, but I just wanted to share that, too, that the internal communication piece is something that we're really trying to build out, so that's up to date.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Len. As far as policy and governance, with Melanie being at a, Melanie being at a conference, we will pass over that this month. I don't believe that committee met, so anything further on that? Talent, diversity, equity, belonging, same situ, or pardon me, strategic planning, let's go with Carrie.
We didn't have, we didn't have a meeting this month, so we are, well, we have one scheduled on October 31st, so we will have our meeting then and report out at the next.
All the trustees have come off a very heavy lift with this presidential search, so it's not surprising that we've had a little bit on the light side here.
We're also switching, now that we have the bridge plan in place, we're switching to every other month.
Exactly, right.
So, that kind of created a gap for us, but we'll meet next week.
Very good. As far as talent, diversity, equity and belonging, Amanda Lau is at a hearing today that was, she could not get out of to get to the meeting, so we have the resources, the Human Resources Personnel Transaction Report, which I've looked at, and the minutes from their meeting, which we will take and file unless anyone has questions, or Dr. Sagai, if you have anything else to add for that committee?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. Technology, Carrie?
So, we have our informational meeting minutes from July, but we have met recently. We met on October 12th. We went through our normal updates for Workday, ERP, infrastructure, information security, but there's nothing that we need to report out. We're meeting again next week, November 2nd, and we will have something to report out at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. And I will move to my report and cover a few things that have gone on in the relatively short time since our last meeting. Before I do, not to surprise you, Katie, but just to ask you, since you're a relative newcomer to the scene here, you are the new leader of the AA ECC and therefore an important partner in what we're doing here. Would you mind giving a little bit about your background and how you came to that position?
Sure.
Come out to the table if you want to catch the microphone.
No, I'll just stand. So, I actually am a graduate of ECC, upstate, a couple other SUNIs. I've been here for 22 years. I've done so many different things here within the college, but I was a president previously, years back, too, so I've seen all different changes, excuse me, within the college, so I'm looking forward to, you know, starting anew, moving forward, you know, just, I want to see things grow. We definitely want to see things grow.
We appreciate that, and welcome to the whole leadership complex here at the college. I know you've been a long veteran, so nothing will surprise you too much, and I think having your experience here will certainly serve you well in new position. It's great that you, you know, you're viewing this, the timing is interesting because we're starting our negotiations with your membership and with the faculty membership as well, and I think, you know, the more that we can all be thoughtful and constructive with one another, the better off we will be, so I'm looking forward to a very, you know, positive upcoming series of negotiations, discussions, conversations about how we can better this place for the students and for our overall collective success. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie, appreciate it. So, our last board meeting was September 28th, so not that long ago. Since then, I've had my, you know, typical weekly slash daily discussions with our officer in charge, Dr. Adiems Sagai, and others, to the extent necessary, to, you know, maintain a constant here at the college in terms of engagement and leadership. We did have a very interesting event two days after our last board meeting, and that was the fifth anniversary gala to celebrate the Northland Center, and it was downtown and really a great turnout. I think, you know, the Buffalo Bills were there leading it, and I met all sorts of interesting people there, it was great. And Sal Capaccio, the local sports reporter, was the officer in charge of the event, the emcee, and really a lovely, lovely night celebrating Northland Workforce Training Center, which of course Erie Community College is such an important part of, and Dr. Sagai will probably comment a little bit on that as well, but it was an excellent evening two days after, on September 30th. We continue, Dr. Sagai and I, to meet monthly on the 16th floor of the Rath Building with the county executive as chief of staff, other county officials who are brought in as needed to those meetings, and those are quite productive. We maintain a very thoughtful and continuing dialogue with our county partners. Len may comment, or Dr. Sagai may, about a very good lunch that we had recently to plan another event in the spring to honor an important person in our community, the late Joan Bozer, who was instrumental in creating the city campus in the post office building, and more on that from Dr. Sagai and Len as needed here in our meeting. But we are looking to further that relationship with her family and suitably honor Joan Bozer for what she has done for SUNY Erie Community College. Colleen is here, and as usual, did a great job at the Senate meeting this month. I do tune in almost to every one, and always know how Colleen does a great job with those, and again, those who are here who may or may not do, Katie, you probably go to those or observe them in some way, but if you don't, it's such a great way to keep a sense of what certainly the faculty members are thinking and doing, the various committees, rules, what Colleen is prioritizing. It's a great way to, for hour and a half a month, to keep your finger, fellow trustees, on the pulse of what's happening at the, certainly at the faculty and level. So, thank you, Colleen, for that, those meetings. Speaking of galas, on November 2nd, we have a gala to, that's sponsored by the foundation, and I'm really glad to report that all of the trustees here at the table today are going. I think Melanie had an out of, Melanie had an out-of-country conflict of some sort, but, so she cannot do it, it was a family birthday type of thing, so, but all of the trustees you see here at the table are going to that gala, often with guests or plus-ones, and we are looking forward to a great night. So, I would encourage everyone who's around the room, who can manage that and go to that gala, it should be a great night. Jenna Bickler has been a real shot in the arm in terms of the energy level over at the foundation organizing this event, and I think we're in for a really great time at the powerhouse on Lee Street, so if, there are some tables around and there are some folks, you know, there may be tickets around, so if someone is deterred by the price but feels like they would really want to be there or couldn't afford the full freight, I would say, reach out to Dr. Sagai, and one way or the other, we'll try to see if we can, you know, do something to get people there who are really interested in being there or should be there and maybe deterred a little bit by the price. Who raised their hand?
I just had a quick, so Lee Street is that, is the building near the train tracks?
Does anyone know exactly where the powerhouse is? I haven't.
I want to say I saw like this really nice building in the middle of like, no.
It's on Lee Street.
Off of South Park, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a really nice, you can see it in the middle of like, everything else is so. Yeah, right before the Tesla building, that's a little side street.
Okay, yeah, I'm interested.
How's it an event this summer there? And it's, the Rich Products Company owns it, huge, big, really nice.
It's those glass window, those large glass windows that stuck out.
And you'll see the building from the street, it's not hard to see.
It's beautiful.
There's a great commercial right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Would you like a donation from the Rich Company, please?
Thank you.
Yeah, that should be a real nice event. I'm looking forward to a night to celebrate. That may lead me to another topic. We had kind of hoped that by November 2nd, we would have SUNY's blessing for the trustees' recommendation for the permanent president of SUNY Erie Community College. Due to just the way SUNY operates, a relatively slow process and a very thorough vetting process, once a name is submitted, we will not have that name to announce there, but we hope to, I mentioned last meeting, we hope to, by the end of October, it'll now probably be November, maybe early December, by the time we actually can publicly acknowledge who our future leader will be. But whenever I mention the presidential search, I do want to make sure to continue to reiterate as a group our collective support for Dr. Sagai. In her role as officer in charge and for the entire team, most of whom are here in this room today, we appreciate what you have been doing and what you will do, and when we actually can announce that new president, it will be the start of an exciting new chapter at ECC, and we're looking forward to that day. Ken, thank you. I participate not in all of the committees, but on the budget audit and facilities, and Ken is doing an excellent job in terms of making sure those meetings happen, paying attention with Arda to the agenda for them, and making sure that we are talking about some subjects other than just what the budget outlook may look like, or should we raise tuition? No, we've been talking about things like chargebacks, like the transportation policy, things that are broader issues that to some extent are being held a little bit until we get our permanent president in place, and that person can then take some of these ideas and build on what's been done, you know, so far and advance them. So, we're a little bit in a holding pattern, but we're not letting go of important ideas that need to be addressed at the committee level. I do want to mention that my friend, Mr. Lenahan, our collective good friend and community leader, celebrated a birthday last Sunday. Many, many more. Congratulations. Hope you had a nice day.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
Yep. I've mentioned that, you know, talked to folks at the county level and Dr. Sagai and so forth, but I've tried to make it a habit, and I encourage this for other trustees as well, if you happen to see a student, make sure to stop and say hello, and I've done that quite a lot, and it really has led to some interesting discussions. Students here are fantastic, exciting, ambitious young people, it's great to meet them. And you do get to hear, my typical first question is, if you could say something to the board of trustees about how your life here could be improved or enhanced or will make you more sticky in terms of staying, what would that be? And it's interesting to hear what is said, you know, some take a minute to think, but, and they generally do like the place, but I have heard things along the lines of, you know, the transportation is really tough, being on buses, moving from place to place. So, that type of comment has actually stimulated the discussion we've had at the Budget Committee, and will continue to have in terms of examining our entire transportation infrastructure here. Are we doing the best we can with our NFTA contract? You know, what about the Cedar Bus, the inter-campus shuttles, how does that all feel? How does that all fit together? Does it make sense? Is there a better way to do it? These are things that will be an important priority. I would say for the board, just in our internal discussions, transportation is right up there. You know, we think that this is something that burdens students, and we, we've got to figure that out and make that just as light a burden as possible. There was a mention of the meeting with the Erie County Fiscal Stability Authority. For those who may not know exactly what that is, Len is the best person and Ken to talk about that, and I, I think I will invite them to do so briefly, but basically what this is, is an oversight, a fiscal oversight board that has two roles. It has either an active role or an advisory role. Back in the days of the so-called red-green budget in Erie County circa, what, 2025 or 2005 maybe, or?
Yeah, kept ahead in five and six.
Yeah. The county was in dire financial straits and it needed an oversight board, and, and I think at one point, the, the, this board was charged with overseeing the county and all the things that are affiliated with the county, like our, our college. And they issued some bonds because at one point their credit rating was higher than that of the county. So while those bonds are outstanding, which are actually for a pretty long time, twenty, thirty years, that board will continue in existence to monitor that board and conduct some advisory functions and make reports and investigate what's going on at both the county and the college. So when Dr. Sagai and Arda went to speak with them, Ken Vedder is the executive director, Ken will ask questions, and he's a, you know, pretty sound financial person, and he would, last year, for example, before Ken joined the board, he said, "I see that you're making some layoffs and so forth and some retirements, and that should help you in the short term, but what about the three to five-year outlook?" And he will ask questions like that and ask us, and expect us to respond to that. So I think I'll stop there. I don't know if Len, Ken, you want to add anything about that board?
Just quickly, Ken was a member of the fiscal advisory board, fiscal board, so I'll defer to him. I'll just say, when it came about, it was during a very dire fiscal crisis, and, you know, I'll just say, I was in county government a long time. When Dennis Gorsky left office in, in 2000, the county had this incredible surplus, we had all kinds of money, and what happened was, there was a tax cut proposal by the next county executive that was excessive and just over the top, and although it was very popular at the time, those of us who were involved in county government said, "That is a big mistake, that's too much." Sure enough, we even had some tobacco money left over, I mean, so a lot of money went out the window and all of a sudden, not only did we not have the surplus, we were in a big deficit situation, because when you cut the tax rate, the tax rate of the county, it's a permanent cut until you bring it up. So all of a sudden, we were just laying off all kinds of people, and the state controller at the time, Alan Hevesey, said it's time to impose a control board and dig the county out of the situational rent. I'll defer to Ken, Ken's actually a member of that board.
I came on just as everything was exploding, and we wound up becoming what was called a hard control board, where we basically took over the finances of the county in terms of supervision of what had to be approved and things, contracts and stuff. It took two or three years to work ourselves out of that, because the, the county did dig a very deep hole for themselves. It's, it's a lesson that was learned here a little bit and is now doing much better with our fund balance. The, the reason there was a control board was because the fund balance was basically deleted, and they used it to provide tax cuts, which then they had no money to backfill. The upshot of the whole thing was they raised the county sales tax by three-quarters of a percent. So things are better now, the, the authority is in a advisory state, they do have their bonds that will expire sometime in the next ten or fifteen years, and there's still a staff there, it's not very active compared to what it was in the day that I was on, on the board, but it's keeping an eye on things.
Very good. And as a segue into, well, we'll hear, I think I'll ask Dr. Sagai to report next, because it follows from some of the things that I've been saying, some of the things that she'll take up.
Absolutely.
But one of the things that may be of some interest is what's going on in, at South in terms of the, those of us who are going to the Bills game tonight, when you drive down Southwestern, you will notice a different appearance.
Yeah.
Very much. And, you know, my quick, you know, summary of what's going on there is that we've been, you know, pretty good neighbors to the county and to the stadium development in terms of being able to lease them, and yes, we make some money from that, lease them space to put the, essentially what's being dug out of the hole into a place. Absent our agreement to do that, that would have involved putting that, that earth and rock and shale and stone onto trains to ship to some remote location, store for three years, and what's ultimately going to happen, which has surprised some people that I've spoken to, is that material will be used to fill in the hole that the current stadium sits on now. So when that gets raised, this debris that's sitting there for several years during construction of the new stadium will be, will go away and will fill the old hole, and that will create a parking lot. So I'm, I may have misstated some of that, Paul, but that's the general idea that I have, and people that I talk to in the community are surprisingly unaware of exactly how this is all working, and, and I just thought I'd offer that little bit of color. I don't know, Paul, if you want to say anything else?
That's pretty much what we understand.
Okay, very good.
It's a temporary storage, and it's going to go across the street to fill in the hole of the old stadium.
I'm not going to forget about Cam and Colleen for your reports, but I just want to go to Dr. Sagai's, because some of the things I said may, may lead right into your topics.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. So I think you mentioned Chair Stone about Northland and the event. We all participated, as you know, we're a big part of what's happening at Northland and continue to happen, and very excited about the continued growth at Northland. Part of what we're doing at the college, myself included, and certainly I think the board, is, and our, you know, senior leadership and our faculty and staff and students, is really to engage in the community at every event that we can, and we've been very much present in a lot of the community events. So I want to thank everyone for really making, and those are usually on a Saturday or Friday evening, so it's, it's a lot of time commitment outside of our regular time, but I want to thank everyone for really engaging in those. And as you know, I believe in, and there's a litany of lists that we're doing that I think will take probably the whole afternoon, but part of what I like to do is kind of show visual, and so if we could just have the visual up so that everyone could see, and this is just one of the many things that the college is, is participation. So internally, one of the things that I want to highlight is our student engagement and wellbeing conference. This is the second year that we have been participating. This is really student-driven conference, this is all about students. We had our own alumni, Dr. Carl Stoke, speak to our students about his experience about being here, and then we had variety of activities throughout the, the day. So this is, this went really well. Thank you to the faculty and staff who put this together. And then you see on the other side, you see our, our women's volleyball, where they were all wearing pink, and so we'll have more from that side of the house as well in terms of a lot of the athletics activity that's happening at the college, so we'll put a lot of that out there as well. And then the other piece I think is important, this is just of the many way that we want to invest in our faculty and staff. As you know, I believe and certainly we all believe that it's critically important that we invest in our faculty and staff to make sure that we're serving our students and making sure that we're prepared for our students. So this is one of the area on our student, student affairs side under Colleen, we have Mr. Kenya Hopp presenting to our student support services side of the house. This is their second professional development workshop. The plan is to really to expand this to the other area of the college, but this is really part of our, really intentional to make sure that we are constantly investing in our faculty and staff to make sure that all of us are up to par to serve our student. Next slide, please. So this is some of the community event that myself and others have been participating. You can see on the one side, we, we participate, this was a Saturday Women's Health Network luncheon, and it was a beautiful event that we participated. That table there was designed by Colleen Meadie, so we had a really nice network opportunity, but really critically talking about what does it mean in terms of women's health and how we could serve and make sure that all of us in our community are participating and aware of that. And so we had an opportunity to represent the college. On the other side, you see Frontier, Big Picture, grand opening. That was an awesome opportunity for us and certainly for myself to participate, and this is at our South Campus, so we have our students from K to 12 from Frontier having their educational experience there. And as you can see right underneath that, Myra, Myra is one of the students that I met during the, the grand opening, and she wanted to understand how I became a leader in education, and so she wanted to do an interview, so she, I had the opportunity to interview with her. So can I tell you, she will be an awesome journalist, that is part of her goal, and part of what she wants to do, and we are going to do, and that's her principal, Danielle there, and we will see both of them during our event at the foundation on the second, is really for her to just shadow myself and other leaders of the college as to how you become a leader. So an incredible time that I spend with her.
Adam, excuse me, before we leave that point, I wonder, would it be helpful or reasonable to introduce that student to Janet, who covers higher education in Western New York? I bet, I bet there'd be some profit in such a, such a get-together. I'll leave that to you. Handle offline.
Absolutely. We'll talk to, to the right folks to, to see what's possible, but I think the big piece is that we have other students within Frontier. I know maybe Colleen will talk to, but our faculty and staff, particularly at South Campus, are very much engaged with the Frontier Big Picture Initiative, so we are working with them in collaboration to make sure that those students are also having an opportunity to shadow and meet our faculty and staff, specifically at the South Campus. Faith in Blue is another community organization. We hosted this event at our downtown campus. This was a two-day event that brought in, and I know Mark was part of that as well. This is bringing the police, the criminal justice area of our, of our community and the faith-based community to, to really collaborate and talk about our community and to make sure that we're building relationship to really put the focus on our community, but really it's about building relationships. So this was a great event that we hosted. And certainly, we had our presidential meeting with the SUNY chancellor last week, it was a three-day event. There was one with the Community Colleges Association, it was a two-day event that we had an opportunity, and certainly I had the opportunity to engage with other presidents within the community colleges, but the chancellor also hosted one where we had all the presidents within SUNY to really engage in a very robust meeting and receptions, but also a really robust meeting that focuses a lot on enrollment, academic profile, and how we really need to collaborate and work together. We took a lot of that. What I could say, I'm very, very excited, is that our college is moving in the right direction, so we are aligning really well with the SUNY, with the SUNY vision, but really SUNY chancellor, but we, really with other peers institute that we are moving in the right direction, so very excited about that. The last picture that you see is that this was our leadership collaboration with the University of Buffalo Graduate School of Education. They reached out to, to us to really collaborate. It was about, I believe, fifteen or so faculty, researchers and student scholars came to, to our city campus and had a wonderful lunch, and really the focus was, they wanted to know how, how they could assist a community college, but particularly SUNY Erie. So we had an opportunity to engage with them about what are some opportunities, challenges, and future goal for the college, and so the outcome from that meeting is that they will be assisting us with, on the student service side, as well as faculty and staff development, as they could really help our college and us. So we had an awesome lunch, as you could see, those were our students and our faculty, and so we have a signature program, as you know, at City, and the food was wonderful, and so we all took a, a very nice picture to show that collaboration, so that went really well. Thank you, thank you for that. And maybe I could have trustee Len to talk a little bit about the Joan Bozer's initiative?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Recently, we had a very nice lunch at the Stattler dining room where our culinary students did a, just a great shower, we had a delicious lunch. And we hosted Joan Bozer's son, Alan Bozer, a local attorney, and his daughter Elizabeth, who lives down in Florida, but she came up for the meeting, and was all built around, you know, certainly naming the atrium in Joan Bozer's honor, but around that event, we're going to have an event that would, you know, raise funds for the school, probably sometime, talking about in the spring, we'll have to decide when we're going to actually do the naming, but we're talking about having a, you know, a major fundraising event for people that want to honor Joan, that would, you know, certainly benefit the college. So this is exciting. I served with Joan, you know, for, for her entire 20 years on the kind of lunch, we were there together, and I left shortly after she left, and, you know, she was just truly an inspiring figure, totally dedicated to arts and culture and education and really improving the quality of life, so many environmental initiatives, and although she, for most of her career, she was a Republican, she became a Democrat the last couple of years, she was basically a bipartisan, she really couldn't care less about the political nature of what we were doing, she just wanted to get things done. And, and she, so she did so, and she was just a delightful person, passed on recently in the last year at the age of 95, and she was still working at a private, she did the carousel at the waterfront, that was her initiative, her name is, is over there, grandchildren wrote on it this, last summer. So yeah, we're very happy to, to organize that. Jenna, again, from our foundation, and Mark, the chairman of the, the foundation board, are very involved in helping and assisting in making this happen, and so it's going to be very exciting. We're really looking forward to it. Adam, thank you for your leadership and really, you know, making a very important event happen. Jeff, leadership at the trustee level. So I'm very excited. It's a special thing for me, because we're so close. Ken served as budget director for the county, but also chief of staff at the legislature when that, when that, when that event happened. It, it took a long time to get it done, there was a lot of give and take, but at the end of the day, you know, we were able to get the, renovate the old post office and make it the city campus for Erie Community College, and so we're looking forward to this.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
I really appreciate it. I, the, the city campus is so beautiful and the post office, I remember the city campus before that, it was way further up Main Street, and my exposure to that was traffic school. I got a ticket, and I had to go take traffic school, and I went to that, it was my, actually my first exposure to Erie Community College as a young man, so that's where my roots traced back to. Ken, anything to add on Joan Bozer?
No, I'm just echoing what Lenny talked about, we knew her, we worked with her, she did handle things in a bipartisan way, she was just dedicated to trying to make the community better, so as soon as we can take care of that and honor her properly, the better.
I think we're looking for, what, the spring, it's April?
We're talking about an event in the spring, and we'll talk about where the actual announcement's going to be made, but it's not been obviously a boat yet, but it certainly looks like we're building to that.
Okay. And there's another meeting scheduled with the families.
Right.
Early November.
Yes, the next week.
November, the day after the election.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much. The last thing I want to, I know we talked about this, about the collaboration with Chairwoman April Basket about Level Up Initiative, so two components, just to kind of come back to that. One, the collaboration on the academic side, how we can partner to really help out with the education side of, of the Level Up Initiative. The other is really an exposure to, particularly to the restaurants within the, the Buffalo area, and so one of the things that we've been working with Chairwoman Ann the Bills and others is to have a taste of diversity at the South Campus. The idea is to have it in the month of November, more to come, is really to have, I believe there are six restaurants that are participating in that initiative. It is a pilot program, it is an opportunity for us to make sure that we have food, very diverse food for our faculty and students and the individuals who are working on the project. So very excited about this opportunity. We'll send out communication, and so the idea is to invite, including our faculty and staff and our students, but certainly the board, as to have this, and this is going to be on Mondays, and we'll have that, and it's going to be really focused on breakfast and lunch, and to really just give an opportunity to these six restaurants to, to really have their restaurants be presented to a variety of, of individuals in our community. So excited about the opportunity, they are helping us with the funding of it, they have invested in really, in our cafeteria and really upgrading some of the tools in the, in the cafeteria, so we're very excited about that. More to come as we get that actual date. More to come as we get that actual date. We will have a grand opening to that. We have not set the date yet, but it will be happening in the, in the month of November. So very excited about the collaboration.
Allison.
Thank you.
You mentioned quite a few events, and that prompts me to thank Kelly LaPiana over there for the regular and steady work that you do of keeping the Board of Trustees informed of all these events.
Yes.
Many of which we do try to go to, sometimes as a whole board, other times individually, making sure we have our quorum. Just a lot of, a lot of work behind the scenes goes on, Kelly, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
No paper for Cap.
No, I like tree, save trees. So kind of, Dr. Sagai had already mentioned that South Campus, they hosted a Think Pink event for breast cancer awareness month at the Flick Engine Center, which had great attendance from students, which was awesome to see students coming just besides for class, to come for an event and support, you know, their sports team. We also hosted a wellness and engagement students conference day as well, Dr. Sagai mentioned, which also had great attendance from the students. It's good to have a wellness day, especially, I would, I would have rather had it this week than before midterm week. So, but this, it's okay. And then, South and City both hosted a Hispanic Heritage Event Month as well in October. And then, again, students are requesting that SUNY Erie for all campuses extend their library hours and just hire the staff that will be able to help maintain that as well.
And I remember you mentioned that last meeting.
Yes, yes, yes. And then just something too, I didn't know if there was a possibility, but as, like I said, hiring, I don't know if housekeeping will be a possibility to address?
Did you say housekeeping?
Yeah, hiring staff for housekeeping for City Campus. And then, yeah, that, that's it, yeah. Well, also too, we also have the arrival of new amenities at City Campus. That's why I kind of want the housekeeping to be addressed, so when we have those new facilities, they can be maintained.
Okay. Yes. Cameron, just for those who haven't heard this before in the room, around the edge, or even to refresh some of us, just remind everyone what, how you got to come to SUNY Erie and what you're studying?
Oh, so I, I didn't originally start at SUNY Erie. I actually started at Kinesius. I was there for about a year and a half or so. I did a couple of semesters. Obviously, money was the biggest issue. Like, I had, I had academic scholarships, and they covered about, say, ninety percent, but I still had to pay out of pocket for school, which was a lot. I didn't work, I was still living at home with mom. So being able to come to SUNY Erie and not have to pay for school is like a big plus for me. And I'm still able to pursue the same education that I was going to, paying three times the amount of money, which is medicine, or just nursing in general. So, and I'm really glad I made that decision. I honestly felt if I didn't, I'd kind of be stuck in life, you know, where you just didn't know what you wanted to do with your life. So, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate it, ECC. Thank you all.
Great. Thanks, Cameron. And back to Professor Quinn from the Senate report, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
College Senate met a couple of weeks ago, right before midterms, and then, of course, now we're all in grading jail for the midterms, getting ready for, to move on toward the second half of the semester. But it was a great informative meeting. I'm just pulling up my notes really quick. We did talk about the Title III grants and how faculty and staff will be working with Kathy Celesto's office on how to implement those changes for the spring moving forward. Being at the math department and teaching some of the entry-level math courses, my department is effectively, is impacted directly, as well as, you know, our English and things like that. So we're working on that all together. So that's very exciting. We had some discussion about our three-week roster reports and different changes that came into effect, and then how we'll be using that as a retention tool moving forward, and then how, you know, if our students with the three-week roster, if we haven't seen them, you know, make sure we're talking to our students, getting them the tools they need so that they can complete the semester successfully. We discussed some advisement issues with Workday and some different things that are programming errors. So I know Kathy Celesto and I think Adrian Rannick are both meeting with individual departments now to make sure that Workday aligns with the program requirements for each department. So we're working through that, which is perfect and good timing, because we are going to be advising students for the spring semester. So as soon as the semester goes live, or the schedule goes live.
I remember listening to that discussion. Dr. Sagai, do you feel that the Workday alignment issue that Colleen has identified is being addressed?
Yes, I think part of it is that it, it really is a large issue in terms of how Workday was designed by our college at the beginning, and that's why we had to do a lot of that. So part of what we're doing is really reeducating our faculty and staff to understand what those decisions were and the impact of those decisions, and how we need to realign those decisions with our policies and procedures. So a lot of educating our faculty and staff to really understand what happened and why we're having some of those difficulties. So a lot of that, and to, to Colleen's point, Kathy and Adrian and others are really working with individual, but also the senior leadership has also taken a very different approach with it, which we'll have a lot more during our IT committee meeting, to really address it at the high level, to make sure that we are really moving in the right direction. But everyone really understands the fundamental issue, why some of the issues that we're encountering now. So we are working through it.
And Colleen, I hope you feel the, the same way, and to the extent you don't, I hope you maintain good dialogue with Dr. Sagai and the team, because I did notice some anxiety there among the attendees at the Senate meeting about that subject.
Right. And, you know, I think a lot of it is because we are so good at communicating.
Yes, very transparent.
And some of our general studies staff, Michelle Kamorowski in particular, has direct involvement with a lot of these issues and has been very upfront about different problems as they've come up. And so then we've been able to take a team approach to solving them. So that's been really helpful, because, you know, we do have an environment where you can, you know, pick up the phone or send an email and say, hey, there's a problem, we need to fix it. And then we take a collaborative approach to fixing it. So everyone I've talked to has said different things along the same lines, that, you know, we are having meetings, we are going through our program requirements, making sure that Workday is correct so that all of this does get ironed out, so that we won't have issues, hopefully, moving into the spring semester, as we're working on advisement with our students. Our seven-and-a-half-week courses, the second half of our seven-and-a-half-week courses just began. So the other ones are finishing up. The new second semester, second half of the semester courses are beginning. We were able to add three more courses because of student interest, which is really great. One of them was a survey anatomy and physiology to accommodate any anatomy and physiology students that might need to withdraw, so they can take a survey class, kind of still stick with that anatomy and physiology, but add a lighter load to help prep them so that they can take it again in the spring semester, but also still maintaining full-time status, which then our students do not get impacted financially for that. So that's a really great benefit to our seven-and-a-half-week course. Courses, we're still looking into maybe adding a few other combinations for the spring semester. So we're talking to faculty and staff and departments, like, hey, what do you think might work, based on the success that we've been having with that. We have open house coming up at all three campuses. On November seventh is going to be at North, November eighth is at South, and then November ninth is at City Campus. I know you've mentioned the Big Picture Academy at Frontier. They will be at South Campus touring during the day, and also they'll be, obviously, can come at night for our open house. But all of our departments are going to be open for our Big Picture students. We have Communication Arts, Info Tech, Architecture, Business. They're going to have interactive displays and interactive activities for the Big Picture students as they are touring the campus. So that's really exciting. And then the student, just on a personal note that you, the interviewer, do, Morella, I'm really good friends with her mom, and we ran like probably twenty half marathons together.
She's, she's awesome, I'm telling you.
She's amazing.
Yes, yes.
Her mother's great, her sisters and her brother are great. It's such a great family from Frontier. So as soon as you said the name, I recognized, I'm like, oh, that's Morella, and then you said it was her, I was like, oh, that's great. So I'm going to be texting her mom after this. But what else did we do? Commencement is going to be May twenty-second at six p.m. at Buffalo State. So we're working with Dan Frontera, getting more faculty and staff to be involved in the graduation process. We're going to, just like last year, have divisions, faculty lead out the divisions of our students, and we're working on adding to the student experience. So College Senate is going to be naming some individuals to help with that, to make sure it's a more student, more fun for our students as they lead up and walk into the graduation experience. We started the meeting by talking about faculty and staff across the college that have been with the college, with, ending in fives and zeros, anyone with ten-plus years of service. Gail Fraser's not here, but Gail was here for forty years. She was the first slide out. And then a lot of our senators have also been here for many, many years. I think Erickson, I don't know, I saw him somewhere, he's just hit ten. And I think I just hit fifteen, my former vice chair just hit fifteen. So, you know, a lot of help came from our human resources department coming up with that list. So Connie Engler helped me with that, which was great. And then we ended the meeting talking about chancellor's awards. So there's a bunch of different categories for chancellor awards. For whatever reason, last year, our faculty and staff did not nominate any, anyone. So we're going to be doing a big push this year to get some names out there and get some nominations, so that we can further celebrate our faculty and staff that have been working really hard for the college for many, many years. And, you know, with the recent retirements and things like that, there's these lists of people that were like, you know, like really were deserving of a chancellor's award, and now they're retired. So, you know, there's a lot of regret with that. And, you know, we can do the professor emeritus, which is still a great honor, but it's not a SUNY honor. So we want to try to make sure we're pushing for these individuals that have been working hard for us and our students for a long time and deserve the recognition. And then I'll be at the gala on the second. I worked with Jenna, much to what you had said, like College Senate does not have a budget. Zero dollars. So I reached out to Jenna. She has been attending the College Senate meetings, and so she was able to comp two tickets for College Senate. So I'll be attending, along with another senator from South Campus, next week.
Great. Glad you, glad you can manage that. That's terrific.
Yes.
And thank you, Colleen. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yep. We will have, we did not talk about enrollment specifically at this meeting, but what we do have is another Board of Trustees meeting in a very short time because of Thanksgiving. We'll be meeting on November sixteenth, which is very close to come, three weeks or less. So I think at that point, the numbers will have settled, and we'll have a more robust discussion of where we are on enrollment. Any old business or new business, we covered all of our business in our prior discussion. At this point, we will bring the open portion of the meeting to a close, and I would like to ask for a motion, please, to go into executive session to discuss permitted items, including collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law, and possibly the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property matters within the purview of an executive session.
So both.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone who attended. We will be coming out of executive session. We don't anticipate... We don't anticipate...
Thanks, good to see you guys.
Thank you.
I'm going to thank you.
See you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Much so.
You got it.
See you in this week. Yep.
Good, Jeff.
All right, we're back. We have had, we've conducted an executive session. The board members did not take any formal action during that executive session which involved collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service law, so we are now out of executive session and I will accept a motion please to adjourn our meeting at 11:38.
It's a moot.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Good.